This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, thank you.
Is it going online?
Is it going online?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't mean to bother you, but I was just having some...
She put it out on the...
The stack.
Both of them. And Rachel's here again. Rachel's here.
Oh. Okay, we can start whenever you're ready.
Okay. Oh, let me just hear it. All right. Perfect. Yeah, we'll get started. All right, well, thanks for... This isn't a regular meeting for you.
It's got open...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we do have an agenda, so I just wanted to make sure you're ready all...
Yep, I'm ready to roll.
Okay, this is kind of board supervisors meeting. We have an agenda in practice. We're discussing the plan this morning. Any corrections need to be made to the agenda? Otherwise, accept the motion or approve the agenda.
I'll approve the agenda.
That can make some motions, or second?
I'll second.
Mayors, that is... Any discussion? Two carries. Okay, second item, discussion with Assured Partners.
Very good. All right, well, first off, thanks for coming in this morning. I don't think this is your regular board session, so I always appreciate... Not all boards are flexible like this, so I do appreciate it. My name's Ryan Burden. I've worked with your county for a number of years. Now, with Assured Partners, representing the ISAC Group Benefits Program. Last year, we had some good discussions. I know you had looked at some other options outside of the association. I think that was a good practice to go through. I do think it was a great decision to stay in the association because of what I thought would happen this year with your group getting healthier and qualifying for some more discounts, and that's what you're going to see for the fiscal year 25 renewal. So this will take effect July 1 of '24. And that, again, that's the biggest reason counties like to be in the pool is they have an idea of what the renewal is going to be before they start their budget. So I think of the 40-plus counties we work with, I probably talked to 25 of them in the last couple of weeks. Even if I can't meet with all of them, they just want to have an idea of what to plan for. So let's open up the renewal. Right behind this thick cards that cover, there's a table of contents, and the proposal looks a little bit different this year. We did a refresh just on the design. But we'll talk about the ISAC FY '25 highlights and overview. Tab 2 is our compensation disclosure for any products our agency has directly with the county. Tab 3 is the medical renewal. Tab 4 dental and vision. Tab 5 life and voluntary life benefits. And then tab 6 is going to be review of any voluntary worksite. We have an accident, critical illness, voluntary E D and D. All those products will be in that last tab. If you go to the next page, this is the benefit management team that we have in place for your county. I work on the sales side of things on the left-hand side. We have a client support team that works with Lindsay on a day-to-day basis, and then Samantha in my office does all of our carrier marketing. The next page is a fiscal year 25 renewal forecast. So we're going to go through all of this in detail through the proposal, but starting at the top with the medical plan. And that's through ISAC with Wellmark as the third-party administrator. You'll see on the right-hand side, your renewal is a 0%. ISAC last year put in a 0% floor. So, and the reason we do that is so we're not getting negative renewals to then give a larger overall base rate renewal in the future. So your county did qualify for more discounts because of improved loss ratios, like we talked about last year. So you are getting a 0% increase for the next fiscal year. The partial self-fund that we have with Midwest Group Benefits, so they buy down the deductible on the co-pay plan or that traditional plan. There's a $1 per employee per month increase to the admin fee, and that's our broker fee that we have association-wide. It was $1.50. Your group got left at $1.50 because we didn't get the disclosures out in time last year, so everyone will be at $2.50 for fiscal year '25. So that amounts to about a $500 fixed cost increase for your county. Dental through ISAC is a 0% increase. That's for the entire association. Those rates are all the same for all of the counties, different from the medical where it's based on your actual loss ratio. The vision renewal with Delta Vision is a 4% increase, and that's going to be with another four-year rate guarantee. So when it renews July of '24, that will be in a rate guarantee through June of '27. But it's just coming off a four-year rate guarantee. Your group term life policy with Reliant Standard, since it's so early and we're seven months before the renewal, we don't have a renewal yet, but as soon as we get that, we'll communicate that with your team here. And I wouldn't anticipate much of an increase, if anything, for the next year. And then your voluntary life product with Reliant Standard through ISAC, that's in a rate guarantee. The accident and critical illness, we're keeping both of those benefits, but we're making a carrier change January 1st, so we're leaving Reliant Standard, moving to Voya. And we've had some educational meetings with the auditor's office, and then we're going to do employee meetings virtually in January to talk about those new benefits. But there are some enhancements, and those work with the ISAC Wellness Program. And then we have a voluntary critical illness with Reliant, so that will continue through the end of June, and then that will be replaced with a Voya voluntary critical illness. And there's going to be some enhancements to that as well that will benefit your employees. And then we have a voluntary A D and D-only benefit with Reliant, and that's in a rate guarantee. And lastly, Cobra Administration with Midwest Group Benefits, that's paid by ISAC because you're a part of the health program. So for any terminated employees, we have a third-party administrator administrate that process of collecting a premium if they want to remain on the health plan. Okay, let's go to tab 1. And this is the FY '25 overview. But in the upper-left-hand corner, the health program. Again, I've already mentioned this, but the early release of renewal rates is why counties really like this product and continue to stay with it. We have 27 counties. We did lose one county last year. Like your group, they got a standalone quote with Wellmark. Their risk had improved greatly over a three-year period, and so the timing could not have been better. They left, but they are looking to rejoin this year. So that hasn't happened yet, but I did just meet with them recently, and I think that's what's going to happen. Two other counties, both between about 100 and 200 employees, are seriously looking at ISAC as well. So the pool is consistent with membership, and I think we have some opportunities to continue to grow it.
And you base... You accept them based on their reason, though, also?
Yeah, the three-year look back. So we're underwriting new business engines like we would underwrite existing business. Exactly. Yep, so we don't have to take groups in. If they're not of acceptable risk, then we decline them. Yeah, we want... The idea is we're bringing them in to where it could be profitable for the pool and provides more rate consistency long-term for all of the numbers. Yep. The dental and vision program, which you're both a part of, the dental program now has 29 counties and continues to grow. The vision 25. On the right-hand side, under the complimentary ISAC benefits, the wellness program will continue for next year, and that includes an employee assistance program. ISAC also pays for accident coverage for all of your employees that have health insurance. And then new January 1st, they're also going to pay for a $5,000 critical illness benefit. And so all of your employees will get that at no cost automatically if they have healthcare. And we have a flyer on that later in the presentation. Again, Cobra Administration is paid by the association, and we do consolidated billing, so any ISAC product comes on one invoice each month. And then down in the bottom-right-hand corner, our agency. We provide full-employee benefits consulting, just like we do to any employer that we work with. With a dedicated service team, we help with compliance issues, and then we host the enrollment platform for online enrollments. The next page is the 2024 Wellness Program. This looks very similar to the '23 program. It runs January through the end of October. I think in speaking with Lindsay and Rachel before, there are... We want to make sure that if employees get their physical to qualify the county for the discount, they need to have the fax form from the physician's office in by the end of October. So that probably means trying to get that physical done maybe before October 1st, so you're giving that office some time to have that handled. Your county lost some discount on the wellness program this year because of that. However, because there's a 0% renewal floor, it's actually potentially going to work to your advantage next year if you go from a 3% discount to a 5, because that's going to be an extra 2%. If you had all 5% this year, you couldn't get that back next year. Does that make sense? So if there was ever a year for you not to get a 5% wellness discount, this was the year. So if there's a 2% base rate increase for ISAC next year, you get all 5%, your renewal is 0% for fiscal year '26. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Wasn't there a wrong phone number on that fax form?
That I don't know.
I think it was like last year's form. I think the fax number changed this year.
Oh, did it?
So someone might have... They might have had like...
The last year's number. Got it.
I don't think I made up there. And if you have a physical, you can't ask me over 365 days.
No.
It doesn't. Your physician's office will probably tell you that. With ISAC, it's one per calendar year. So you can have one done December 31st and January 1st if you wanted to.
Because mine was towards the end of October.
Yeah, they're going to tell you that they can't see for another year, but you just have to say, "Our program's unique. It's one per calendar year."
Thank you. And I'll get it done earlier.
Yeah, we get a lot of confusion with that.
Actually, contact them. Well, you can't have it till October 20th or whatever.
Yeah, and you just have to say, "I'm very confident." Yeah, you keep getting pushed out. You can't get it done within the timeframe.
Correct. Okay, I will. Thank you.
Yep. But, long story short, it's actually probably going to work to your advantage that you didn't get all 5% for the moving into fiscal year '25. But if we have 80% of employees get the physical, it's a 4% discount. 60% that does the online assessment, that's another 1% for a total of 5. ISAC then provides $20 per contract to the county for your own initiatives here at the county level for wellness events. And then for the employee incentives at the bottom, this looks very similar to last year. However, with the Voya accident policy taking over from Reliant Standard, everyone now with a $100 wellness. So that's up from the 75 for the base core program. So everyone's going to get a $25 increase if you had the lower-cost accident plan. The $25 for the assessment stays the same, and then the walking challenge, 10,000 steps a day, 243 days, so a maximum of $243. Okay? And then the last flyer in this section is the CareBridge EAP flyer. We just need to make sure employees know that they have a very comprehensive employee assistance program available to them that's confidential to help them through situations throughout the year. But this flyer will talk about different items that it's going to cover, but certainly mental health is the pillar to the EAP program and confidential resources working with physicians. All right, if we go to tab number 2, this is our Assured Partners Compensation Disclosure Agreement. So any producer that meets with a respected client or a client when they're showing a renewal proposal needs to outline how they're paid by line of coverage. So if you flip to page 3 of 7, the page number is in the bottom-right-hand corner, the two products that we work directly with the county on that's not affiliated through ISAC or ISAC's actually the employer would be your group term life policy and your third-party administration through Midwest Group Benefits. So you're going to see, we get 11% of the collected premium for the life insurance, which amounts to about $300 a year. And then we get $2.50 per contract for the partial self-fund. And that's with Midwest Group Benefits for that service. We'll have to have this signed, and we got this signed last year. It can certainly be by the board. It could be Rachel or Lindsay. But we keep this on file in case we're ever audited by the Department of Labor. Okay, let's go to tab 3. And this first report is the Rate Adjustment Utilization Key, and this is going to walk us through how we got to your increase for fiscal year '25 or no change for your group. But in the upper-left-hand corner, we look at the last three years' worth of data. So fiscal year '21, '22, and '23. And fiscal year '23 ended June 30th of this year. So the collected premiums are what you paid ISAC by year. And then we have a total expense. And you're going to see FY '21, you are 107% loss ratio, so you were unprofitable. But the last two years, 72% and 77%, so you were profitable for the association. So your three-year average was 85. So you went from a Level 1 discount last... this current year to a Level 2. So you're at a negative 10% right now. And you can see that if you're less than 85% for your overall loss ratio, you're actually going to go to a Level 3. So we'll take this year's data and replace FY '21 when I meet with you next year. So if you ran... If you run under 107% loss ratio, you're going to get slotted up to that max discount of 15%. So let's say ISAC has a 7% base rate increase next year, which I don't think is going to happen. Even if it did, if you got this Level 3, that's 5. And if you get the 2% wellness, that's 7. So your county, in effect, would be another 0% increase. So it's highly likely your rates are not going to change again next year. And that's what we talked about last year. I could see this coming for your group because your loss ratios were improving.
That's very good.
Yeah. If you look at the middle section for the large claim adjustment, so this is specifically looking at large claim risk within your county in any members that have exceeded $200,000 in claims paid for the plan year. For the most current two years, FY '22 and '23, under the stop-loss credits, that's the number that's going to reflect any claims paid in excess of $200,000, and we didn't have any. So your overall claim loss ratio under the pooling level of $200,000 is profitable, and you can see that above. We're also not having large claims within your group, and you're seeing that reflected here in this middle section. So you went from a base rate on the key to the right. Last year, or this current year that we're in, FY '24, you're a base rate. You're moving up to a Level 1 discount. Again, if you replace another 0% and you're eliminating the 111, you're going to stay at that maximum discount. So it's unlikely that you're going to lose that 2.5% next year. So then we go down to the very bottom, under the ISAC base rate for FY '24 and '25. So association-wide for fiscal year '23, your county did well. The entire association did well. It beat the budget that we had put together by about $2 million in aggregate. So because that happened, and FY's '24 budget looks really good with the improved performance of '23, the base rate did not change for this year. So if all of your discounts would have stayed the same, you would have gotten a 0% increase. So that base rate that every county starts at stayed the same from '24 to '25. Now, every group can be rated differently based on your loss ratios over the last three years. But that base rate number did not change. So your experience adjustment for '24 went from 5% to 10. Your large claim went from a 0% to a negative 2.5. And then you can see the wellness was the one area where we actually got a worse discount for next year, from a 5 to a 3. But that's actually a good thing. So you went from a 90% of base rate discount to 84.5%. Lot of moving parts on this page. I wanted to explain what would happen next year, what I certainly anticipate to happen for your group, and why I think it's very likely that there'll be another 0% renewal. But if you flip the page, you'll be able to see current on the left, renewal on the right. The number at the very top is the total county spend. And that number is going to reflect the premium that you pay to ISAC along with the partial self-fund expense to buy down the deductibles and the HSA contributions that you make into employees' accounts. So the two plans you have, on the left-hand side of current is Plan 11E. On the right-hand side of current is Plan 12C. 11E is your traditional co-pay plan. 12C is your high-deductible health plan with HSAs. So if you go down to the enrollment, you can see we have 43 employees on the traditional 11E plan. These are your premiums, 774 and 1738. You have 42 employees on the high-deductible health plan with HSAs, and you can see the premiums associated with that plan. On the right-hand side for the renewal plan, you're going to see some numbers in red. And the deductible on Plan 12C had to increase again because the IRS sets a minimum family deductible level for high-deductible health plans to be eligible for a health savings account. So every health plan that's built in a similar way had to go from $3,000 to $3,200 per single.
Who set that, did you say?
It's the IRS.
All right.
Yep. So ISAC had to conform with this. If the IRS didn't set that minimum deductible level at 32 and left it at 3,000, we would have left it at 3,000.
The 5,400 the same?
5,400 is the same for family. Yep. So what this means, this is an embedded plan. So for any family contract, and you have seven families on this plan, if you go down to the bottom, one member within that family would have to meet a $3,200 deductible. They are not having to meet the entire family deductible at 5,400 because it's embedded. And having an embedded plan is much better than a non-embedded plan. That would mean one member would have to meet the entire family deductible. So you're going to see the two numbers at the top are exactly the same because it's a 0% renewal. And that number includes your partial self-funding with Midwest Group Benefits, and it includes your HSA contributions on behalf of the employer. I assume that you would just keep that all the same. You would keep the same partial self-fund plan with Midwest Group Benefits and the same HSA contributions. And for the HSA plan, the employer puts in $1,600 for an employee only and $3,200 for family. And that's reflected if you go like the fourth line item down after the deductible employer funding. On the left-hand side, if I follow that across, you'll see that the employer's funding $5,350 of the 11E single plan. That means your employee's out-of-pocket is $1,000, and it's $2,000 per family. The 12.7 minus the 10.7, and then you'll see the HSA contributions get them, $1,632. So phenomenal benefits. The county essentially is paying 99% of the single premium. So the employee's paying $10 across the board for employee only, and you can see the family amounts listed. Any questions on this page?
I was looking somewhere else when you started going through that, so sorry about that.
No, that's fine. If it comes up, certainly, just let me know. But the next page, and what we've done, this is... We had a couple of counties last year say we've never gotten to see a Wellmark utilization report. I want to make sure that the Wellmark numbers match what ISAC's telling me. And I can tell you with 100% confidence, ISAC has been, since the day I started working with them, incredibly transparent. Any number that they get is just a direct pass-through to the client. And so that's what this report reflects. This is for Mitchell County for fiscal year '23. You're going to see the months on the left-hand side. It's going to start with July of '22. It's going to run all the way through September of '23. We include months after the end of the plan year because medical claims do not process real-time. They take 30, 60, and maybe as long as 90 days to pay. And so that's why we have to show three months of lag or runout. The covered charge is what providers submitted on behalf of Mitchell County members. So just under $1.7 million was the charge from providers to Wellmark for your membership. Now, the savings that we get, and I talked about this last year as well when you were considering another product that used a rental network, where I talked about the difference in discounts between those networks. You can see we're at about 1.7 in covered charge. We're saving more than 50% on the discount with the provider savings. So you start with the covered charge, but then you discount it. And Wellmark has the most business in Iowa by far, and they have the most power with providers to negotiate deals. And that's what's reflected in that provider savings column. You then get, after the provider savings, you have to take out what employees pay for deductibles, copays, coinsurance, et cetera. The net paid for your group for this year was $545,000. So you started at almost $1.7 million, but they're actually only paying $545,000. We then have the Wellmark admin fees on behalf of your group, which totals just over $47,000. And then we have stop-loss premium. So that's buying a maximum claim projection for the entire ISAC pool, and it's also buying that per-person deductible of $200,000. So your total expense of 710, 794, if you go back to the first page in this proposal, that's going to be very close to the total expense that was shown on fiscal year '23. The numbers aren't always exact. In this case, they're off about $500. It's just the tying in of the reports aren't exact down to the day. But this report is just meant to show you and give you the transparency that we haven't been able to show in the past. But this is all a Wellmark report up until the paid amount, and then we have to manipulate part of it where we put in our admin fees. Any questions on that one? Okay, the next page is a partial self-fund reserve analysis. And your group is unique where historically you've not had a reserve fund balance established or not much of a reserve fund. When this got put in place six or seven years ago, that fund... The rates weren't set appropriately to create a reserve fund. And so now the only way to create a reserve fund is to dramatically increase premiums on that Plan 11E. I think you've just been opposed to that in the past, and I can understand why. So you can see in this report, you have a reserve fund balance of about $14,000 currently that we got from Rachel. And then it's going to show you the fiscal... The premium paid that you're paying yourself based on a 10% increase, a 12.5% increase, or a 15% increase. We then have to subtract the ISAC premium. So we subtract $538,000. The expected claims of at 30% of $73,000, the admin fee. And you can see, even if we raise our rates 10%, we start at $14,000, we're ending in a negative balance. So I think what's been done, and maybe Rachel, you could expand on this, you've essentially just paid that expense as it's come every month.
True.
You've never had a reserve fund to pay that out of.
I believe we budgeted $70,000, don't we, for that?
Yeah. And then you just pay them as they come. Yeah.
So a lot of groups have a significant balance established here because they started at a much higher premium level. That accumulated a balance, and then they can use those funds over time to reduce increases on the insurance, to pay for other benefits. That just hasn't been the case here. And unfortunately, the only way to start that is, you can see, you'd have to take a 15% increase to see very little gain. If you start at $14,000, we'd end at $24,000. And you can see what the premiums would have to look like in order to do that at the bottom. You'd be at over a $900 single and a $2,000 family premium. Where currently, on the left-hand side, you're at $784 and $1,752. Because your group has the other plan with half of the membership, your partial self-fund claims have never exceeded 2% of your general fund budget. Groups that have all of their employees in a plan with a partial self-fund, they can sometimes exceed 2% of your general fund budget. In that case, the state of Iowa requires you to fill out an actuarial opinion, and they tell you the amount that you have to have in this reserve fund. That's not happening to your group because a lot... Half of your employees are not on that plan. And so, and we work every year. We make sure that you're underneath the 2% threshold, which you are. So that keeps you from having to conform with this reserve fund style.
If they require us to do that, if... Does that mean we budget for it? Or does it mean it automatically does the rate increase?
You'd have to... You'd have to actually put money into a fund dedicated for this purpose.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. So I don't think... Maybe that's unlikely to ever happen because we have so many employees in the high-deductible health plan because the county's giving a very generous HSA contribution.
So what do you recommend to do?
We've talked about it the last couple of years. It's ripping off the Band-Aid when you go from the premiums that you currently have all the way over to option 3, and you're not really gaining much traction. It's probably fine to continue to do what you're doing. I just think it's going to be, unless the county's going to pay for a much larger percentage of the premium, because if the premiums go up 15 or 20%, and you want to keep the employees portion the same, that means the county has to pay a larger percentage. But you're kind of just shifting dollars because the county's still paying for it. They're just not budgeting for it in this account. You're just budgeting for, you're just paying the claims as they come due. So it's really just moving money. So I, I think Rachel's got a really good idea of what's going on. If you ever want to change that, you know, how you're fundamentally doing this, it'd be, I think it'd be a pretty easy change. You just have to change the percentages the county's paying towards the premium to keep the employee whole. Okay. And then the last page in this section is the grid for the entire ISAC pool. The plans that you have at the bottom are, the premiums are circled in red. And these are the planned premiums for ISAC for fiscal year '25. There are some other plans that would save the county money if you're ever in a position where you want to try to save 10%. Plan 11E has a very similar plan for Plan 17. It's essentially a plan match for Iowa-only claims. But when you leave Iowa, and especially since we're fairly far north, you go to Mayo, those Mayo claims are processed out of network. And so members would have to pay a little bit more towards their, their out-of-pocket expenses. Now, ISAC has the same out-of-pocket, or excuse me, out-of-network deductible and out-of-pocket maximum on this plan. So their partial self-fund plan through Midwest Group benefits would still stay the same at 500 and 1,000. They would just get to their deductible and to their out-of-pocket quicker. But we do have counties starting to move to this plan, especially more in central Iowa. Because you can see, it's about an 8% to 9% savings on premium if you change the network. You'll see the deductible, the out-of-pocket, the copays, everything else is essentially the same. It's just for non-Iowa claims, they process out of network. And members lose that deductible waived coinsurance benefit for office visits. And so 100% of that allowed amount goes towards your deductible with Midwest Group benefits. And again, the member is going to reach that 500 faster, reach that $1,000 faster.
Where does that show that on here? Just so we know exactly where that shows up?
Yeah, so if you, it's, it's a little bit confusing. We can't show the, all the plan, all the details. So this is only showing in network, but it's going to show primary care physician required, yes. So members, if we put this plan in place, they would have to designate a primary care physician for their physical every year. But it's still open access. You don't have to have referrals to see a specialist. But it's for out-of-state claims, they would process under the out-of-network benefit. Now, there's some competing trusts within the state of Iowa. One in particular, the Iowa governmental healthcare plan, IGHCP. They notoriously have been contacting almost every county that's in ISAC. They only have that network. So they have all of their groups on the point of service because it's a deeper discount in Iowa. You get an even deeper discount than the current network you have today. But you have the concern that if you leave Iowa, those claims process differently. And I'm sure Rachel Lindsay events emailed, called from IGHCP. I just want to make sure, if you're ever to consider that, just know that you're, you're comparing this Plan 17 to their numbers. Because it is, it's totally different than the national network that you have today. Okay, there's a review for the medical. It's a 0% change. Your group is getting healthier. Again, the 3% wellness discount is probably going to work to your advantage next year. I would anticipate a sub-5% ISAC base rate increase. But I think with 75, maybe even 90% certainty that your renewal next year will be 0% again because of how you're doing and how your, your loss ratios have improved. Okay, if we go to tab four, this is a review of your dental plan with ISAC. And again, this is a 0% premium change as well. So the total at the top is the total county spend, so just under $40,000. You have Plan 2N, and what that means is employees have a $1,000 annual dental benefit. So once they've spent $1,000, this benefit is exhausted essentially on a, on a annual, on a plan year basis. For the renewal plan, there's going to be, you're going to see implants under Major that's going to be highlighted in green. That's a new benefit that will be effective July 1st of '24. So historically, ISAC has never covered implants under a dental plan, and that's pretty common amongst most employer-paid dental plans. We've had, I would say, 15 to 20 inquiries over a five-year period, and ISAC decided to spend a little bit of money and include coverage for implants. And implants are expensive. So that's a great benefit to have. Also down in the notes at the very bottom, the last note is going to say includes checkup plus. This is also another new benefit effective July 1st. What this benefit does for anyone that gets your teeth, you do your teeth cleaning every six months. We hope that everybody that's on the dental plan is doing that. Because that's about a $200 charge or a $200 claim payment. So it's $400 a year that reduces from that $1,000 today. So your $1,000 benefit, if you get your teeth cleanings, is really 600. Is everyone following me? With this endorsement, even if you get your two teeth cleanings, you keep your $1,000 dental benefit. So if you have another dental need, you're starting from the $1,000, not from the 600. So this is a great benefit for a $1,000 annual dental max. So you're really giving a 40% increase to your benefit by adding this endorsement. And again, and it's another reason just to make sure that folks are getting their teeth cleanings. Go do that. It's not even pulling down your annual $1,000 benefit. So that's about a 2% to 3% actuarial value increase that was included into the dental plan and still with a 0% increase for next year.
Similar to what I'm paying for the physicals? I mean, we get paid for physicals.
Exactly. Physicals don't cost anything. Yep.
The same kind of thing.
Yeah, and the, yeah, and your teeth cleanings already cost zero. But in addition to not costing anything for the member, it's not reducing your $1,000 annual dental. So if you have a crown or you have an implant now or a veneer, you can spend thousands in your mouth very quickly. At least you're starting with that full $1,000.
So that's good.
And the county pays 100% of single at the bottom, you'll see. So employees pay nothing for employee-only dental, and then it's $43.11 for family. So the county pays what they allocate towards the single premium. The next page is a review of all the dental plans offered through ISAC. Your plan rates are circled in red. We have some better plans if you're ever interested in increasing the annual benefit. Now, you, in essence, you got about a 40% increase by just adding that checkup plus rider. But we do have a $1,500 dental benefit and a 2,000. Both of those plans also include orthodontia. So if we ever have employees that are expressing concern having braces covered, those two plans would cover braces for dependents below 19. So you would get the 50/50 rate for both of those plans. So the single premium doesn't go up much because braces don't affect employees. However, the family, you'll see a larger increase because that's where the exposure for orthodontics is at. So 83.46 becomes $100 and 108. Now, the county's only paying the employee-only premium anyway. So it may be worth at some point to do a survey and ask, is that an important benefit for, for your members? So even if you did go to the Plan 3 or 4, the county's cost is, is going up just by a couple of dollars a month an employee. The majority of that increase would be for the employee, for the employee, but they're reaping the benefits. Again, dental, dental work is very expensive. So we've continued to offer higher annual maximum plans. And you have a lot of time to think about this. This isn't effective until July, so you certainly have 60 to 90 days to to decide if it'd be worth making a dental plan change.
Going to the 2,000 isn't much, from 1,000 to 2,000 isn't much of an increase.
For the employee, it's very minimal. Even for the family, for $25, now every member in your family gets an additional $1,000, plus they get orthodontics. It's a great benefit to buy up when you look at the costs.
Yeah, the cost difference for the buy-up, yeah.
The next page is a review of your vision benefit with Delta Vision. Again, this is a 4% increase, but no change to the plan itself. So the eye exam is covered with a $10 copay. There's a $10 material copay towards your lenses. You have an annual allowance for contacts of $130. The fitting for the contacts is fully covered with an in-network provider. And then every two years, you get a $130 allowance for frames. And you can see the lens allowance and how that's covered for single, bifocal, and trifocal. Of course, progressives, lens enhancements, those are all additional number out-of-pocket events. But the 4% increase, 594 increases to 618, 1516 increases to 1578. So the county pays 100% of single, so the county increase is 20, 24 cents a month. And you can see the total cost increase to the employer, 5916 going to 6155. So about a $250 annual increase for the, for the county to continue to pay 100% of single. And then we have the entire vision grid behind that. Okay, if we want to go to tab 5, and this is a review of your employer-paid life insurance with Reliance Standard. Again, we don't have a renewal yet, but I anticipate it to be a very low percentage increase, if any. The benefit amount is $10,000. And that's for a premature death. There's a benefit reduction schedule, so employees over age 70 have that $10,000 reduced to 65%. So $6,500 or $4,500 if they're over those age reduction levels. We have 80 employees enrolled in the benefit, and it's about a $2,700 employer expense. Now, I've had three or four meetings with counties in the last week. A lot of them still have a $10,000 benefit like yours. A lot of them are asking to look at a higher amount. If you want to see a higher amount, we can get a proposal. The cost difference, you can see what the total cost is for 20, for $10,000. It's a very inexpensive benefit. But we're happy to show a $25,000, $50,000, if that's something that you wanted to consider. All right, and the last tab is the voluntary benefits. So this first flyer is the accident program flyer with BOYA. Again, you have the accident today with Reliance Standard. It's a very similar program, just making a carrier change. However, if you look under the monthly cost section on the right-hand side, employees that buy coverage for their spouse, kids, their family, or they buy the better plan, that enhanced plan, you're going to see, if you're enrolled in the medical, what their deductions are monthly. And then if you're not enrolled in the medical, ISAC's not, not paying that employee-only premium, you're going to see significant reductions for employee, for the employee deduction amounts monthly. And I think, do you deduct in December for January?
Yeah.
Most, most do. So a lot of your employees that are enrolled in extra benefits do this accident program. In some cases, we'll see their premiums drop by 30%. And maybe, I don't know if you've noticed that yet, but the benefits are, are as strong, if not better, than what we have with Reliance, and the premiums came down substantially. That allowed ISAC, if we flip the page, and on the right-hand side, this ISAC paid critical illness. So ISAC was able to buy critical illness and accident for the same cost that they were paying for accident only with the prior carrier. So now every member, every employee enrolled on the health plan, and Mitchell County has a $5,000 critical illness benefit. So under the schedule of benefits, if you have a heart attack, if you have cancer, if you have a benign brain tumor, I mean, these are serious events, but they're happening all across the ISAC pool. It's a $5,000 per occurrence benefit, cash benefit back to the employee. It doesn't coordinate with your health plan. It doesn't coordinate with your employer. It goes directly back to the employee. Now, they have a benefit today that's offered through Reliance Standard, but it's only at the employee's expense. That will continue July 1st with BOYA with a similar program, but this is paid by the association. So all of your employees in the health plan have this at no cost, effective January 1st. So that's an awesome benefit to offer. If you have a serious event like this, oftentimes you're traveling, you have hotel rooms, you're missing work. This is meant to supplement, you know, the financial crisis that families can go through when they have a serious health condition. Okay, if you want to flip the page, we have the voluntary group term life insurance benefit summary. So this is the benefit you've had in place, and this will just roll over effective July 1st. Any employees that want to apply for life insurance through this program, if they're not a new hire, they would have to answer health questions. They can apply for up to, I believe it's $500,000 of life insurance. That would be a payroll deduction. So it'd be a post-tax payroll deduction, but they can have life insurance in addition to the $10,000 that you pay for through the county payroll deduction method. On the backside of that sheet, it shows, it's a huge grid. It's based on how old you are and how much insurance you want to buy that shows your monthly premium. And then the last benefit, you get, we have a lot of voluntary benefits. You have the voluntary accidental death and dismemberment. So this is only if you pass away in the event of an accident would this benefit pay. And you can buy up to $250,000. You can buy this for yourself. On the back, you'll see your employee plus children or full family in $25,000 increments. This is an old legacy policy that ISAC has offered for, I think, about 40 years. And this will stay with Reliance Standard. Everything just rolls over effective July 1st. Rachel, you have to remind me, do your employees use Employee Navigator?
No, I do it for them.
Okay. That's another, we've had more counties starting to, to roll it out. We've had manufacturer groups that always said, employees can't do it.
Yeah.
They're starting to do it. And I urge you to at least consider it. The employees are having a good experience. They can enroll with their spouse at home. They have access to their benefits all the time as far as their benefit elections. Maybe just give it some consideration.
Sure.
What is that experience, Rachel?
Yeah, so it's a, we have a full benefit enrollment platform built that, she's, she manages all of the enrollments for all the employees herself. The employees can actually do their open enrollment elections online. So every employee would make their election if they were making a change. If they weren't making a change, it'd just roll over. But they can do this at home. They can, they can do it anywhere, and they can have access to that portal with the login. It has all their benefit summaries, benefit certificates, anything that they would need, their benefit handbooks. It's all right there.
It's not just for the, the other plans that are offered. It's for the main plan?
It's going to have everything that you offer.
Okay.
Yep. It's a one-stop shop for employees to have benefit information access and to make their elections. They get married and they want to add a spouse, they go into Employee Navigator, and they fill out the qualifying event paperwork. But it's not paperwork. It's just all done in the cloud. And then they're notified.
That's what I was going to ask.
So you're always notified when a change happens, and then you have to approve the change.
And that's how I would know to update their payroll.
Yep, yep, yep.
So have you had any complaints, like employees pick something, and then it comes out of their check, and you're like, I didn't do that? That's what I'm worried about. Like, it's easier for me to.
Yeah, I would say, if you, if you see a huge change in open enrollment, you can always talk to an employee and just say, did you need to go from no voluntary benefit elections to every benefit that we offer? Yep. Yeah, but you'll get a full open enrollment. Yeah, but you'll get a full open enrollment per paycheck report, so you'll be able to see current versus what they elected for the next year.
Okay.
But it, paper is no more, so it, it actually, long-term saves, auditor's offices love this, what, after the initial splurge of just doing it, like the fear of, of the unknown, right? But once they give the, and the employees actually like it, it's, you're empowering your employees to make their benefit decisions.
There's places that do this already.
Oh, we, yeah, we do it for hundreds and hundreds of employers. I would just, just consider it.
Okay.
We have some county references, if you'd like to talk to other counties that have done this over the last couple of years and how their experience went.
I'm thinking the employees that don't use a computer, don't.
Yeah, so they could come in with you still, and you could, you would be able to work with them through the login, help them make their elections.
Okay.
Yep, and, and we have, most of the counties do that for folks that, that maybe don't have a computer, or just really struggle with technology. And you'll probably find 90 to 95%, you can do it right in your phone. Almost everyone's got a smartphone.
Right.
Or most. And they can, you just, it takes five minutes.
Yep.
How difficult it is for Lindsay, she had the example that somebody does something, they don't realize that they did it incorrectly, they come in six months later and say, well, what's up with this? How difficult it is to navigate to change it?
Yeah, well, with ISAC, for her, well, she would work with our team and we would work through the problem. It doesn't happen very often.
Okay.
Yeah, normally, it's caught pretty quickly, maybe a couple months, and we can always get a retro change. So we can always go back to the initial effective date and get the premium credit. ISAC's very flexible with that. I think maybe we just had a situation where we, with your group, where we enrolled someone back quite a ways, actually.
Yeah.
That would be way outside of the normal protocol.
Right.
I won't go into details, but ISAC is super flexible, a lot of carriers would have just completely turned you down.
Well, and your team is awesome to work with, like, they're great. I was just thinking, oh, is it going to be more of a pain for me with, because sometimes when the invoices come and they're wrong, it is kind of like, then you got to sit down and sift through every, like, okay, what happened?
Yep, yep.
So I just didn't want employees coming back to me saying, well, I didn't need to sign up for that, so can you fix that now?
The nice thing is, you can tell them if you don't want to make any change.
Because then how would I, like, credit their, like, then when I have to credit their paychecks, and, I mean, that's.
That's what you'd have to do, yeah. That's what you'd have to do, be a retro change.
But it probably wouldn't happen a lot.
We don't see much of it at all. We really don't. Probably less than 20% of your employees make a change at open enrollment. They, they probably just roll it over so that, they don't even have to log in, if that's the case. They only log in if they're making a change.
Yeah, that would be nice. Well, maybe we should just put it on this year.
The first year, you might feel like it's a little bit more work, but when you look over the next 15 years, or your tenure here, it will save you a lot of time. Yeah, but you have time to think about it. You know, we'll do, we could do the virtual training, we usually do one for all the employees anyway, so.
And then do the, does open enrollment work the same? Like, would someone still do, I think Katie's done, like, Zooms for us before.
Yeah.
Still do that with the employees, and then they just.
Yeah, and she could actually do one where she would show how the enrollment, how they would go in and make the benefit election.
Okay.
Like a 15-minute quick tutorial on how to do that.
Okay.
Yep. And it, you know, explain the benefits, but then show at the end how to actually make your, your own personal election.
Okay.
Not on paper.
Right. Yeah, yeah. Well, those paper forms, everyone's so confused by those, they're, there's no other good way to do it.
There isn't any other good way to do it. This is, it's so.
So we're going to explain.
Yep.
Yeah, so maybe.
This, you can take the two plans, they compare the plans, they show the employee contributions, you're, it's.
Yeah, so then they can ditch the paper.
Yeah, it'd be totally gone.
That would be sold. Yeah, okay, we're going to do that.
Sold, yeah, sold pretty fast there.
Yeah, well, and there's no, there's no cost for it, it's already there, so. It's just taking advantage of the technology that we've put in place, and, you know, it's there.
You're saving my day.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good decision.
Well, yeah.
For sure. All right, any questions at all about the renewal for July? Again, I think, really feel strongly that your renewal next year, when I'm back, will probably be very similar to what we're talking about today.
Can you give me that 2%?
We'll probably get, you're, you're one of the first renewals we've done, I think I've done, this is my third ISAC renewal. We'll probably get paperwork to you in the next month, but we, you know, we have a lot of time. I would say by mid-January, we'll start sending out renewal paperwork for the groups that are not with. I'll probably still be meeting with groups through, maybe the middle of February. There's only one of me, and there's a lot of counties that I have to have the same conversation with, so. Okay, well, thanks for your time this morning, and again, for your flexibility in coming in.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, very good. Yeah, think about the.
I don't even think I have to.
Okay.
Once you said get rid of the paper, and like, that's perfect.
Here's one of them, I want to show you. So it's 9:26, meeting is adjourned.